AT&T says it's not quite, you know, like fifteen seconds.
Before he was started.
Oh, good.
Okay, we'll start.
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to June sixth, two thousand and eighteen. A special meeting.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember Lempres? On his way? Councilmember DeGolia, is it fused? Vice Mayor Whitmer?
Here.
Mayor Wees?
Here. Can I get any public comments from anybody in the audience that is, or items that are on the agenda? Is there any members of the public that has some public comments related to any item on the agenda?
I'm just curious to hear about the fire.
Perfect, okay. Jim?
Yeah?
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments and I'm gonna move on to item number one, which is review of the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen nineteen town budget, Robert.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council and the public. Before you is just a review and discuss the operating budget of the two thousand and eighteen nineteen fiscal year. This is our third budget study session, so this is a recap of what we've gone over the last couple of study sessions. So, just wanna kinda give a quick general fund budget summary overview. General fund revenues are fifteen point seven million. This does not include the parcel tax of one million twenty, I'm sorry, E-R-A-F, or one million twenty-five thousand. Accessory E-R-A-F. And fiscal year eighteen nineteen projected expenditures are fourteen million. We have recommended transfers out within the general fund of two hundred and thirty-five thousand for workers' comp. So, the major revenue sources are broken out in this next slide. Property taxes make up the majority of it, of eleven point, eleven point zero five million. Total is fifteen point seven million. We add in the excess E-R-A-F of one million twenty-five thousand, and our total revenues is sixteen point seven million. So, this graph here shows just the relationship between our revenues of sixteen point seven to fourteen million in expenditures, and the transfers out of two hundred and thirty, thirty-five thousand towards workers' comp. The net fund increase in the fund, general fund balance is two point four million for the fiscal year eighteen nineteen. So, our revenue assumptions for the year, property taxes increased by five percent with the exception of uncertain property taxes. Building department assumptions are increase of two percent. Other general fund revenues are flat between one and three percent. And as of the study session, there have been no changes in revenue projections since our last budget meeting. So, the general fund expenditures, expenditures increased one hundred and fifty-eight thousand fifty dollars from our prior budget study sessions. And the result of some major adjustments include incorporation salary benefit adjustments for unrepresented employees of the three point seven five percent CPI. We also have, there was some, it also includes a pickup of one percent CalFirst contribution. That's about forty-two thousand. There was an increase in councilmember membership of a thousand. There was also an increase of fifteen hundred dollars within the administration, interdepartmental fund for CalOps. Major expenditures are public works budget. We had an adjustment of sixty thousand from the last budget study session. This is a re-budget of maintenance rehabilitation of the park path from the pedestrian bridge to the park. That is just, wasn't done this fiscal year, so we're re-budgeting that into the next fiscal year. There's a five thousand expenditure for CalRecycle grant. And the police budget, as we went through in our previous study session for the internal service funds, there is a forty-one thousand dollars for ballistic armor plates. And there was an adjustment for an increase of seventy-five hundred for new computer, software for report writing in the department. So, total was one fifty-eight thousand. Of that, one hundred and fifty-eight, one hundred and six thousand is one-time expenditure. So, general fund budget summary, as of two thousand and eighteen thirty, two thousand and eighteen, our beginning fund balance is projected at sixteen million. Revenues of sixteen point seven. We have our transfers out of two hundred and thirty-five thousand minus our expenditures projected for eighteen nineteen. Our projected eighteen nineteen fund balance at year end will be eighteen point five million. This also just shows, based off of our eighteen point five million, shows our reserve contingencies of five point four million. Eight, fifteen percent is two point one contingency reserve. Twenty percent contingency reserve is two point eight. Minus the reserves of five point four million, we have thirteen million of unallocated reserve projected for eighteen nineteen fiscal year. Moving on to capital projects, we went over the capital project budget, SEB budget in our last study session. We have projects of revenue sources of fifteen million. Majority of it is civic center component and the library, which make up almost thirteen million of.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So, I'm, excuse me, I wasn't here when you went over the CIP, I'm sorry, I was out of country. But I did mention it to George, and he suggested I bring it up here. But I think there was a need to review the tennis courts. I believe that several of them need to be resurfaced and/or redone properly. They, with the extremes of the weather that we've had over the last couple of years, the resurfacing that we did about four or five years ago, all the cracks, major cracks have been, have reemerged and are actually potential tripping hazards where somebody could get hurt. I mean, there'd be a liability issue. And given the fact that, excuse me, the fund balance, it's got a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, it might be prudent for us to consider spending some of that as well as reach out to Mr. Jessup to see if maybe he could do some fundraising as well to do that. But I do, I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. It was, I do think that they need, they need some attention. And there is adequate funding in there to do it, but, but Mr. Jessup can get that done, that would be, that would be all the better.
Have we had a, not that with Mike, informed?
I spoke with Mike about it, he brought it to my attention, but I didn't talk to him about the, do the fundraising. So, that was George and I's discussion today, so, yeah.
So, how much fundraising do you think that we have to raise? And are you suggesting that we spend all of the reserves that's in the fund balance right now?
My, my recollection was that when Steve brought it to us last time, I think to redo all the courts properly, it was like sixty-four thousand dollars. So, I think it might be worthwhile if, if we ask him to raise half of it and, and put together a program. If he could raise all of it, that would be all the better. But I do believe that I wouldn't wanna see somebody get hurt on the courts. And some courts are worse than others. So, so I just, I thought we should bring that up. And, and since there was adequate funding there, I thought, you know, it might be considered. I'm sorry I was not here to meet.
That's a pretty, that was a pretty good question.
So, to the chair?
Please.
Okay. So, I, I don't disagree that the tennis courts could use some improvements. And of course, we don't want anyone to be injured out there because of a disrepair situation. And I think that, that's one of the things that we should always be aware of. I'm, I'm just, I'd like to look at all of the other park needs and before we just agree to allocate, you know, a good portion of what our small reserves are towards that. And I think the tennis courts serve a relatively small number of residents. And there could be a fundraising drive to maybe increase the, the key holder fee for a period of time in order to try to raise this money or to do private donations. I'd like to see how much money could be raised, and then maybe we could fill the short clock.
And just so that we can get through questions, summarize.
Should maybe talk about this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring it back after.
Well, my only comment left is that there is a tennis fund that can only be spent on tennis activity. So, it's not coming out of reserve, it's coming out of tennis fund. And that was my comment.
Perfect.
Other than that, I've been all over.
So, within the CIP, we have fifteen million of expenditures. And within here, we have a couple, we have projects that we are working on, streets and roads, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. We have a bike pit master plan project of one point four million. Majority of this is the bike, bike lane, class two lane, middle field road. Drainage projects of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Remaining part of the expenditures is civic center component. So, this implemented changes since our last CIP meeting. The bike pit master plan on page sixteen of the CIP, due to the middle field class two bike lane project anticipating not to start until the summer, this summer. We, there is a necessary budget of seventeen eighteen funds, funding for the project into the eighteen nineteen project year. So, we re-budgeted three hundred and seventy-five thousand from the measure eight and a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the parcel tax. So, that's been adjusted into this, into the CIP. And that's the one point four million for the bike pit master plan project. Park master plan implementation program, page twenty-six of the CIP. In seventeen eighteen park program, there was a project to create the turnaround Hammerhead by the pavilion. That was about eighteen thousand dollars. This project is now anticipated to take place in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. So, we re-budgeted that amount into the CIP program. And that's, they've been showed, they're listed in the staff report and in the powerpoint. Other than that, that's the conclusion, a recap.
Any questions for? I know Bill's the only one that actually didn't have an opportunity to, we've already, we've all seen it. Did our revisions and thanks staff for doing that. But Bill, if you have any questions, I mean, we'll ask everybody.
No, no, I, I had the opportunity to sit down with Robert yesterday and go over it along with George. So, I'm okay with it. I think it was an excellent pack. And that was your shortest presentation on a budget ever, so congratulations.
Thank you, trying.
Good, good summary. Thanks.
All right, anybody else with questions? Seeing any members of the public, any question, comments related to decide them on the agenda? Which is item number one. Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments. And final comments, Bill and Robert, obviously you've already heard them related to the tennis courts and councilmember Lewis's comments. Any other, Bill, who might have comments?
Nope.
Go ahead.
I think this is just a staff direction item. Again, thank you guys all for your efforts on that. That was, it was nice to see all the modifications that we made to, you know, make things better and right, so, good job, Robert. Again, you can get down to the bio slide.
We'll see this one more time?
Yes.
On June twentieth for final adoption.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
In good news, I will not have a powerpoint.
You'll not have a powerpoint?
No.
Perfect, all right. Let's go ahead and move to item number two, which is receive the boundary survey from Holbrook Palmer Park and provide feedback on the next step. It's gonna be Robert.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Back in October of last year, you received a report regarding Holbrook Palmer Park and had some conversation about the private residences that border the park. Since that time, as part of the water capture facility project, the boundary survey was conducted in which we were able to confirm the location of the existing boundary fencing in relation to our property lines. And what that found was on the Felton Gables side, the fence predominantly encroaches into the park. And on the other side, where we have our Atherton residents, the fence actually is on the private property side. And it varies typically on the Felton Gables side, so we're on two feet, and extends at one point to about five. And then on the other side, it, it's outside the fence, it's outside the park property by approximately five feet. And so, what we're seeking is direction in terms of how you would like us to proceed in terms of addressing this. And so, we provided a couple of options for you where we can just basically advise the adjacent property owners about the location of the fence and offer them the opportunity to adjust the location if they so desire or allow the encroachment onto park property for a limited period of time, requesting the property owners on the Felton Gables side relocate the fence. And so, that's what we're here for, is to get your feedback.
Other options, of course, are, one thing we talked about before is notification of these property owners. One of our major issues isn't so much the, where the fence is, but these private property owner gates that come into the park that the council isn't so in favor of in general. We talked about the liability issue that that might present, and we talked about notification of these property owners that those gates aren't authorized gates into the park. And that if you rebuild the fence, you cannot put in a gate. We could provide the same survey and the same letter that we provided to property owners to the city of Menlo Park so that their building department is aware of it. So, when they, when, if they come in for a building permit for a fence, they would be advised of that. I don't know what effect that would have. And some of them might not even get a permit for a fence.
Do we have any, I mean, right, just informing Menlo Park, is there any teaching to this? And we know that, how many actually have gates?
We have, we've done that survey in the past, and that was to the council in the past. So, it's pretty much, if I had to guess, maybe eighty percent of them that had a gate.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And some of them aren't used anymore, they're grown over, but some of them are.
Elizabeth?
So, you know, I think this is really good to know, this is really good information. And I think every property owner along the park in the Felton Gables neighborhood would like to know and receive this information so they know if we're encroaching on them or if they're encroaching on us so that they are aware of the current conditions. Because I'm sure a lot of them don't know. And they just thought the house is, and, you know, they've always lived there, and they've always used the gate, and they don't realize the potential liabilities. And to notify these residents in a very open-handed and informative way about the boundary and about the encroachment one way or another, then they can make the decision of what to do with it. But if they do a major remodel or like a new building teardown, you know, then it has to kind of be brought up to code, just like any AD/AD situation, which I think would be a pretty reasonable approach. Because, and then maybe over time, that boundary gets perfected. I know that we have a commercial building that we purchased to move some of our offices into. And in doing some tending improvements, the building department in Santa Clara came and said, oh, you know, these ramps going into your parking lot, they're at like a two percent grade. We now require you to have a one and a half percent grade because you're doing this remodel. And so, you've gotta tear all these out and make it a one and a half percent grade to bring it up to code. That's a huge dollar amount, but that's just kind of what happens, you know? And so, and I think that a letter, we need to outline the dangers both ways, you know? Their liability or their potential danger of having like a gate that comes into the park. But not to take immediate action.
And that's the overall question. We're gonna put that into a letter that we're gonna write to Elizabeth. Question?
Yes.
Thank you. I knew you were.
Yes, I would like to.
I actually do have a question.
Please.
I think it's for the attorneys in the room, I'm not sure. But are, are.
This is a study session.
Is this not a question?
No, 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 I was saying to him.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right, that's all right.
Yeah.
The, are there any legal consequences to not notifying? Now that we're aware, there's a gap between, you know, where the fence is, where the property lines are, are there any consequences attached to that by way of adverse possession, or I don't know, some other?
It would be if we were private and private.
Yeah.
In fact, you have to post it, you have to tell your neighbor, but you can never get adverse possession against a public agency, so.
So, we're not waiving anything, but?
No, the only, the only question, though, is, and I think I raised this before, it can be a liability thing. For instance, if somebody's gate isn't safe and people are coming and going, and it's on our property, we're the property owner. So, now we're saying that, you know, we're, we could become their insurance company if someone's injured. The same way, you know, you become an insurer if somebody's injured on your home for unsafe condition of the property. So, if there's an unsafe condition created by their fence, we could have a problem.
So, in that, if we're sending people letters, are we going to be being site-specific, meaning how many feet they're off? And that there is a gate, and that it should be secured? So, we're actually notifying exact details related to what we know related to the survey? And if they are?
Yes.
Bill, any questions?
Well, no question, comment.
Ah, that'll be, I'm sorry. Any more questions for staff? And hearing that, any members of the public, any comments related to decide? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments, and Bill, you can answer.
Well, my comment is, we can say all those wonderful things and tell Menlo Park, but Menlo Park does not require people to get a permit when they put up a fence. And so, those fences and the gates will never change. So, I guess the question is, if we think there's some liability and we need to do something about it, then obviously we need to decide that we need to do something about it, and it would probably have a dollar figure attached to it. But if we just think by sending a letter, they're all gonna say, oh, yes, we'll fix it, that's not gonna happen.
There's something else that we could do. If it's perceived, and again, I haven't inspected, and I don't know who would do an inspection, but if somebody inspected and said, this could be problematic, we certainly could require them to indemnify and hold us harmless and have us listed as an additional insured on their insurance property, and even make them get an encroachment permit if they want to stay, if they want their fence to stay on our property.
I think that could be part of the letter.
And that certainly could be, well, it has to be part of the program that the city council authorizes us to do. And I think that would probably have to come back as an act.
It, it would. But then are we, sorry, I'm.
Chairman?
Are we then authorizing the gate by doing so?
No, we, not necessarily. I mean, it's the fence, as you recall, some of the fence that was, might even have been ours that was made out of concrete or something, asked its halves and fell. If somebody were underneath, it could hurt them badly. And so, the same thing goes with their fence. You know, if the wind's blowing and somebody's taking shelter and the wind blows over on them.
I took the whole fence harness thing, but they have a gate in that fence.
Gates, another issue.
There's a liability there, too.
Well, there, it could be, sure, a trip hazard, that sort of thing. But the gates, kind of a, the fence and the gate could be, if you, together or separately. Either way, I mean, the maximum, the maximum would be if they have a gate, you tell them to close the gate and not use it. And by the way, you still have to get an encroachment permit and hold us harmless and that sort of thing if you're gonna continue to have your fence on our property.
And the third option is an amortization period for them to remove it. You've got two years, eighteen months, whatever it is.
Yeah.
You need to move it off our property, or we take action.
But, so, kind of doing Bill's comment, I think, it feels to me like we have two fundamental differences we can take. One is if somebody's fence is on our property, we must have more control over that situation than if their fence is on their own property.
True.
Right? I mean, I would think if somebody's fence is on our property, we've got quite a lot of control about what we might want them to do with it. Yeah, okay. And if it's not our property, I completely agree, though, I don't think a lot's gonna be done by sending a letter, you know, except to maybe approach them with the fence a little closer to the park.
What about, I'm just gonna interject.
For those that have the fences on their property, they can choose to leave them where they are. They just know where the property line is.
Right.
Yeah.
If they choose to recapture some of that space by relocating the fence to the property line, I'm gonna add the, we have to consider the trees that may or may not be along that line as well. They may have that there to protect the trees, I don't know. But you are correct in terms of the folks and the liability that we're more concerned about is for those fences that are on city property.
But even those that are on their property totally, we can still put them on notice that if they use the gate, they're trespassing. And that is both a civil and a criminal issue. So, if you come on or go in, if you use that for ingress or egress, you're trespassing on our property when you do that. Because we don't have to give them authority to use those gates. But that's, that's a policy issue for the council.
Excuse me, my take on it is that, that over time, we want to get, the fences that are on our property, over time, we want them to migrate to the property line. And it seems to me that that's a very reasonable position to take. And if the fence is on our property, I think the council position is that they don't want gates. I actually didn't agree with that. I'm actually pretty comfortable with gates in the property, and I feel like they put up with a lot of noise and other things, and it's kind of a fair trade off at some level. So, that's where I am, but, but if the council, I think that would make sense.
And there are no legal issues that I have at all if they're set back from the property line on their own property. We don't care about it.
So, I.
But just to interject on last time, just for a second, I think one of the reasons why there was some concern is because there was an issue of, and the golf course, about somebody coming on the golf course, securing somebody's residence, and it was really more of a safety issue to the fence, less of a, more of going into the park issue, but more to inform them.
Exactly. More of our obligation to tell you that, you know, there's, you have a gate, and we wanna make sure it's secure
because we don't want somebody coming from the park that's closing your private residence.
So, the other thing is, there's, there are places where our, our fence is encroached into their property. So, I would think that we should, where possible, work on bringing that out and rebuilding that fence line. I don't, I mean, just looking at the.
The, where that is, is along the Atherton boundary.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And so, we have the back of the Gilmore House and all those.
So, that's not along Felton Gables area at all?
Right.
This one right here?
But still, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
But.
But it's still along some of these.
But we could approach those property owners and.
Here's the, here's the tennis courts.
No, there's one property that it looks like faces to the railroad track that it is.
By the tennis courts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
But, I mean, to me, at least, it would make sense to have that go both ways. If we're, over time, if we're working on a fence or whatever, we put it on the property line if it's, if we're encroaching, and then we bring it back in.
It's not that much.
Yeah, that side's not that much.
Where it's.
Well, she said that they, and we would like to see compliance. And, and getting compliance may require the town to actually do the fence. And so, I don't see that we have the capital at this point in time to go put a brand-new fence up. So, I think we should send as strong a letter as we would like, and maybe even put a period of time that we'd like them to come in compliance. And then, at that time, we can then have another discussion so they can, preferably kick down the road other than your letter of asking for a waiver and also saying what we would like to have.
I disagree.
Just, just in a question related to the letter, Bill, you had mentioned some timeframes. Did you pull those timeframes from anywhere? Sorry. Is there a legal timeframe or notification? I, it's just.
No, no, those are, those are more policy questions than legal issues.
I think, still look back to, send me a note and ask me to something by time certainly, and if you don't do it.
Sure, sure. What are you gonna do?
You gotta, you gotta be prepared to do something. And I, I think I'd be in favor of, well, some policy that over time reclaimed, you know, property that was over there. I'm not sure I would say in a year, if they don't do it, we're gonna tear down their fence and move it and put up their fence. Those, that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I will say, I am of the same concern, but I also, you know, that add to make sure that people that do have the gates, to make sure they are secure, to, you know, that we do not, the town Atherton doesn't allow, and even though there are Menlo Park residents, please advise them to secure the gates, it's a safety issue.
It's a security issue. What about the hold harmless and indemnification?
Technically, anybody that's, that has a fence on our property, we make our own residents that put fences on our, in our right of way, get an encroachment permit.
Sure.
So why would we not make them get an encroachment permit into our public property? I mean, seems like it's, first of all, it's required, but it seems like that's the least we could do to protect ourselves from some kind of liability.
And if the residents on the other side want to move the fence out to the other.
That's fine.
We, we follow, I'm sorry, just, so what if they don't get an encroachment permit? What if I've been living there for twenty years and my fence has always been there and I, I just don't go to the town and get it for free?
You can't ever get in, any kind of adverse possession against a public entity. So if you don't get it, we take legal action against you to move your fence.
Okay, that's fair enough. So my point is that I don't think we're prepared to do that.
Well.
So we can, we can ask people to get an encroachment permit. If they don't do it, I guess, because to Bill, most of them will deal with it at the time, but I'd be surprised if we didn't.
Well, there are administrative, there are administrative penalties, there are possible criminal penalties. It is a violation of the city's code, doesn't have to be in the city. It can, can be that they've encroached, well, they're in the city, they've encroached into our property. And therefore, if we want to impose the criminal penalties or get a court order that says you've gotta do this, you know, it's not like, we do that to our own citizens. It seems a little odd that we would somehow exempt others from our own spirals.
So I have a little question.
Or comment for a question.
I have a question. Confuse me now. So, how many of these fences, we built, the town of Atherton built most of that fence line with those concrete slats. And I think that a lot of those concrete slatted fences are on the wrong line.
Correct.
Am I, I mean, so.
No, those are our fences.
So it's not their fault. I think it's not that property owner's fault necessarily. It's because way back when all of Palmer or whoever built the perimeter of the, the park, maybe there were shrubs or trees or the guy didn't know, you know, his sex took out there or whatever. So I think that we have to be really, really careful. We can't do a broad brush. Think about, clearly there are some fences and gates that have been built by the homeowner, but some of them are really old and were built, you know, fifty years ago. So I.
There's not that many property owners now that still have the concrete. Most of the concrete.
The ones that we, the ones that we put up on Menlo Park are our fence, they're not their fence.
I know, but they're.
And if we, and if we put, if we put them on our property, I mean, and the people on the other side, technically, it's, it's kinda like we have the neighbor to the city hall. You don't have a right to encroach on the city's property. Now, some do and.
We put them on their property.
Yeah. Well, if we put them on their property, then interestingly enough, there may be a right for us to do that because we do can take advantage of adverse possession. But, but it never occurs, it never occurs because we don't pay taxes on it. And you're, I think that the comment was made, if we put it on their property, we probably should adhere to the same restrictions that we make them adhere to, to be fair. Do we have to? I'm not sure, but at the same time.
No, I just don't wanna be too harsh on this. I, I think that they're good neighbors and, you know. I think if we can get whole harmless for liability, I think that's what came up, that we don't want to be liable for any accident or invasion of their property because of this gate that we are allowing on their property.
Well, even the fence too. The fence and the gate both have liability issues and it's the exact reason that we have permits to encroach on our property.
Yeah.
And, and we make, our own residents have encroachment permits when they encroach into the right-of-way. And it would seem logical, that's, by the way, that's not very obtrusive. They don't, I don't know if there's a fee for it, but it's not much.
Yeah, I'd win the fee. I don't want to have them pay an encroachment.
But it's just a manner of making sure that we don't become their insurance company.
Right.
If they're gonna charge again, if we have an encroachment fee and it's got a cost to it and we charge our residents, I do agree that they should have to pay the fee. Okay, they got a, they got a private entrance into our park and they have been, earlier, not now, because we do have some residents that have keys, but it was very, very difficult to get those keys. So as far as I'm concerned, my, my vote would be, they have to get an encroachment, they have to give us the, the legal waivers that, that Bill is suggesting. I think we should say we want things in compliance in a certain period of time. But, but I do believe, I can't, I can't see us waiving fees that we charge our residents and, and not, and waive them to Menlo Park residents.
So, the fees we charge our residents are for new encroachments, you know, not for existing fences.
Not true, sorry. I'm, we're, we're working a code enforcement case against somebody whose name is known to all who has a chain-linked fence inside the right-of-way and has so far resisted our efforts to require her to move the fence back under her property. The fence has been there for years, it just comes to light because of a name.
Because it's in the right-of-way.
Yep.
But existing fences that, you know, we're not going around. That's, if it's not in the right-of-way or some other kind of.
Well, that's just the same as public, public property is public property, whether it's right-of-way or a park.
Yeah, and how much is the question? How much, that a curiosity being questioned, I think, for us, how much?
To know?
That's seven hundred and fifty dollars, isn't it?
It's.
I think all the permit fees are like seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Can I make a suggestion? Is that if you are considering that we charge some fee because they're, you, you can also ask us to reduce it, but I would suggest that at least for those fences that we know that we've put up that concrete one, that we don't charge for that because we're the ones that put it there.
Even if it's on our property.
Yeah, we, I mean, say, well, we put it up, we may have knowingly put it a foot inside our property.
Yeah.
At that time, so.
It's our property. I think this is a unique scenario because this is a strange situation and we're obviously looking at it related to the park. And, you know, I think that the encroaching issue and waiver of the actual permit cost, maybe there's some flexibility because we want to attract flies, we want this to work. We wanna work together. And I think that if we throw the line of, you need to pay an encroachment permit or a reduction in your encroachment permit, if, if we move on, you know, we might get more residents to be willing to work with us instead of going out with a hard haul and bing, 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 so.
Can I suggest that we're, if we're gonna put a deadline in, which Bill suggested, maybe some teeth we can put in it, is we waive the fees if you do it within a year. If you don't, the fee's on you. And all of a sudden, you know, like that idea.
I think it's.
It's fine, it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to, I think we need to come to agreement shortly.
Yeah. And it's, the fee is one thing. We have pretty clear direction, everything else is how we wanna handle the fee.
Well, we're not, we can't make a decision, so why don't, why doesn't staff come back and look at it? Get the list of how many of those, because I think it's like two that have the concrete. It might be more. I'd like to know the facts and put it in the staff report for the council meeting.
Right.
Because we can't make a decision sitting here because it's not on the agenda.
I think the councils kind of framed the issues.
Yeah.
At least from my side. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that George can figure out too, the issue except for the fees, which is gonna be, which is gonna be, we can certainly bring about options. And there are some problems with fees after Prop 26 or 62 that if you reduce them or lower them for like seniors or something, you have to make it up yourself from your own general fund. So I have to look at that to make sure that this is not making us pay for some, some non-resident to.
Then, then that would be good for us to have.
That's why we don't have that today because I wasn't aware of that.
Fee for public right-of-way, encroachment permit, fence, landscape.
To a minor construction is two hundred and four dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Not that much.
Yeah.
And if we can come back and get a reasonable markup of what the money would look like if we're sending your president.
So you'd like to see the letter too?
Unreasonable or reasonable, because I mean, I think we're.
I'd like to see the letter.
Just trying not to put things on the agenda that we don't have to put on the agenda.
It's not gonna be a long meeting.
Yeah, we hopefully ironed out all the problems, right, Bill?
Yeah, I think so. I, it's pretty clear to me.
I, I think you've got the idea of what needs to go in the letter and bring this back to us. But we shouldn't have any modifications, many modifications to the letter.
If, if Robert does his job and Bill does his job, everything will be great.
Well.
Our, our presentation will be shorter than his.
All right, so I think you got it up for this one.
Yes.
So that's yours.
Shorter than mine.
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and move on to number three, the charge of the Menlo Park Fire Protection District and this is the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, on May tenth of this year, the president of the fire board sent the attached letter to the staff report for the mayor and council. On May twenty-third, I received a copy of that letter from the clerk of the board. The board president is contacting the town to arrange a joint study session to discuss matters of mutual interest. The letter advises that from the fire district's perspective, there are two paramount issues of importance. One is mobility within the fire district and the other is the installation of a district-wide alerting system to address disasters. Both of those issues were touched on at our last joint meeting in December. We have a regularly scheduled annual joint meeting every December that we try and calendar usually about June, July timeframe. And then the district's concern for mobility, we're focused on three emergency response routes, Middlefield Road, Marsh Road from Barrows to Bayfront and El Camino Real from Menlo Park to the Redwood City border. The similar letter was sent to each of the other jurisdictions within the fire district, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park and the county. If the council is interested in participating in a joint meeting with the fire district, it would be appropriate to provide staff with a couple of topics of focus. Our suggestion is also, let's calendar this for our regular timeframe around November and December, talk about those issues, but perhaps in the interim, we, because all we received was the letter, we didn't receive any backup information, that we could get some backup information in advance from the fire district so that we could have something to analyze in advance of the meeting so we can discuss it intelligently after meeting.
Okay. Any other options for staff? Then I, the only question I had was kind of what you've touched on. We actually don't have any information related to traffic studies or anything like that, so this is just a letter.
Correct.
So we should follow that, okay? Any other members, any questions? Seeing none. Any members of the public who would like to make comment on this item, which is item number three?
Including any members of the fire district?
Like, depends on, I don't know, she, she stays, you don't know, somebody's actually a fire district resident.
Well, I'll make a quick comment. I think, so I, I think it's good that if you wanna get the information, talk to the chief about that. But I think it would also, there's some other issues regarding housing and things that we might wanna discuss. So I'm hoping that we can schedule a meeting. I know that we normally schedule one at the end of the calendar year. So, but if there are other issues that we would be discussing, that the chief's gonna be discussing, issues about housing with the police chief, is something that we talked about yesterday when I was meeting with Harold, that that might be your topic to discuss in an earlier meeting sooner rather than later. That's just my opinion based on meeting I have at Harold's.
Forgot to mention.
That was Director Prowley.
Yes. Why Millie is on?
We need to set up a routine, which we've neglected to do at this point. We have a full council board study session usually around the December timeframe. And around this timeframe, we usually set up a mayor vice and subcommittee in the fire district, chief and city manager meeting to talk about some of those other issues that might come up.
Yeah, remember one we went with.
We haven't set that one up yet.
Oh, that secret meeting?
Yes.
The secret meeting, yes.
But so, whatever y'all wanna do with this one.
Make sure Virginia's not in sight.
Oh, Virginia.
You're doing a great job on that.
Yeah, let's have a secret.
Although I'm looking after trying to set up this meeting today, if I'm right.
I'm just sorry, that was out, that meeting was referred to, but now I already know Virginia did this. All right. Any, any other public comments related to this item? Virginia, I will, we'll come back, let's share something.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public? I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments on that item and bring it back to council in comments and during when Director Prowley has the liaison of the district mentioned. And let's start mentioning, any other additional thoughts?
I.
I guess my question is about housing.
Yeah.
Would that be, the, regarding our police sleeping overnights and things or?
I would say that, just as far as limitations, because that's not a need to, that ain't even talked about. But I'm sure that that probably could be talked about and then different approaches, George was mentioning. But please.
Questions or comments?
Uh, your comments.
Okay. So, excuse me, it would make sense to have, to have a meeting where in advance we're able to agendize whatever issue you wanna agendize? And I like the idea that in the interim, there's a, a very open meeting of, of the subgroup you're talking about.
Strategy to then come, come forth with those items.
Yeah. Bill?
Yeah, I, I support having the midterm meeting like we had last year. I thought that that was helpful. And, and at that time, the fire district would give us additional information and we could then plan for the, the full one-on-one meeting, you know, board to council meeting in December as we currently have planned. I think once a year is, is, is adequate, but the midterm kind of the planning meeting and talking about some key things, I think is, is appropriate. So I'm, I'm supporting the two meetings, but, but one getting in the subcommittee.
I live with you.
Yeah, I'm fine.
You're good. All right. I agree. I think that for us to have, I, I, I note that it's been stated, you know, and I think the letter, we've, we've had the talk, these items have popped up. So it'd be nice to have backup for a substantive conversation with both groups. And a secondary meeting is, is obviously something that we can put a motion as part of the process to, we're gonna have other issues, but these two items can be on the November, December tenth, sometimes. We might as well doodle, that doodle out because it's gonna take us that long, just to agree to a date, sorry.
All right, we'll work that out.
Okay. Perfect. And that would be the end of item number three, and I think that the city attorney is gonna.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we would ask the council to add an item to this agenda regarding potential settlement pending litigation. Brown Act allows an item to be added by a two-thirds majority of those present if there's a need for immediate action and the need came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the agent, to the agenda being posted. That is the case in this instance. I've been maintaining settlement discussions with an attorney in an ongoing litigation matter. And as of five thirty last night, we arrived at a potential settlement. And I need the city council to act because there, it's an item in which we've been sued but not answered. And they're demanding that we either settle or answer shortly. So we'd ask that you put this on the agenda for a closed session.
Requires a two-thirds.
Two-thirds vote, which would be three or everybody.
So can I get a motion from my colleagues agreeing to what Bill just identified?
Some news.
And, and can I get any further discussion related to it? And, or a second?
Second.